Okay. Good morning. I guess you'll join me in a flag salute, please.
[Inaudible] To the flag, United States of America. And to the Republic, whose hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Glad to see everyone here. Welcome to the Bourbon County Commission meeting. Got a lot on the agenda today, so we'll move right along.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from March 22nd and March 25th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Come in, Eric.
We got a couple permits to get through here real quick. First one's gonna be for Joe Kerr on Indian Road, right there at 195th, wanting to install an entrance culvert. And we want to go ahead and get this approved. He's not 100% sure whether he wants to install another culvert or move the existing one that he has. So we want to go ahead and run it through in case. And then the next one will be for, I don't know, do you need to make a motion on that one or not?
You can do it both same time.
Okay. This next one's for Crokan, working in our southwest part of the county, installing more of their phone fiber lines.
Make a motion to allow for the culvert of Joe Kerr on Indian Road, for a possible extension or possible replacement or new. And then also add Crokan fiber lines in the southern part of the county, you say?
It's the southwest.
Southwest part of the county.
Out around.
Second.
Between three and.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Got a phone call this morning out on Maple Road. We have a utility company that's cutting Maple Road. This morning, it's the first I've heard of it, so.
Which mile?
I want to say around 190th or 195th, I believe is where they said. So anyhow, I don't know if there's previous conversations or anything had with anyone before me or what have you or any of you, but I don't know anything on it, so we're gonna work together with them to try and get permits and what have you, so that way we don't just all of a sudden get a phone call that the road was cut. I don't know whether core samples were done. They said something about rock. I know there's some rock in the area, but anytime we can keep from cutting a hard surface road, we want to, we want to try and get it bored, so anyhow.
What are they installing?
Water, I believe is what's, it's gonna be encased and what have you, so.
So normally they go to the Public Works Director.
Absolutely. It's the way it should be.
And make a request.
Right.
And I know we've approved more than one.
Right, so.
For them to do that, so did they just take it on themselves or why?
Is this a new company, not aware of the process?
No, it's, it's.
Or water district.
Someone knew the process.
It's not new to the pro, well, it's the.
They knew it, yeah.
Yeah, so anyhow, I'm not sure if there's been previous conversations had or not, so anyhow, I just wanted to make sure that if you are notified, please send it my way so we can make sure we get everything, all our i's dotted and t's crossed and get our proper paperwork in place.
Now, approximately six months ago, I talked to one of the persons on the board, but my instruction was to contact you.
Okay.
So if they're making any reference, anybody talk to them, their instruction was to contact you.
Okay.
To move forward, so.
Okay. Anyhow, we're gonna move on from that. I just want to make that Maple Road will be shut down today, and it will be open cut, so we'll have to monitor it, make sure it's put back.
Don't go through there 70 mile an hour.
Exactly. It's gonna have a speed bump.
Can we hear that on the radio?
I think they were in the process of letting everyone know. That's what they told me this morning, so just letting you know. Also, kind of an update on our local road safety plan, the grant we received last year. Trans Systems is here today, tomorrow, possibly Wednesday. They will be driving our RS roads, doing video surveillance, collecting field data. So if you see a vehicle with flashing lights and what have you on it, it'll say Trans Systems on the side. They're out doing, gathering data for us for our local road safety plan. Stop sign in Bronson, I believe the one that they were talking about already existed. And that's at 25th and Bay Street, so I don't believe we need a motion or anything for that. We just, we'll get it installed. We've done our location, what have you. At the curve that goes into Bronson, and I'm not exactly sure what we're calling the curve there, but it's be Bay Street and 25th be the far west part of the curve. There's nothing there. I cannot tell whether there's been a sign there or not. I don't have any data or documentation of anything previously there.
What coming from the north going to south, is there one right there on Bay, stop sign?
North, let me get my bearings here.
If you come off the 54 highway, go south, is there a stop sign?
There's a stop sign there, but it's the one.
I think the other way had the traffic flow, I thought, but I don't think.
Let's look here at the, I made copies of that way.
So you're talking about that short road in front of Seagull?
Right, yeah, there's that. There's writing on here, overlook the writing. There works Bay Street, and I think it says possibly a yield sign or what have you there. Not sure whether to, whether it was there on the curve, whether it was over on Bay Street itself, or whether it was on neither. Chairman, do you have any recollection of that, or?
Well, if I have any, which I don't generally, but I thought there was a stop sign right there where 25th hits the curve.
On stopping Bay or stopping?
On 25th up by the curve, and the curve had to right away, but.
Right, but what about going into Bronson? That, the far left.
On Bay, yeah, I thought there was a stop sign on Bay at one time, but. Like right here, maybe?
There was absolutely one there.
There, yeah.
And we're gonna put that one back. My question is, is this area right here?
Well, the stop here, I would think this would match it.
That's what I.
You got the flow traffic there.
That's my.
Be my opinion.
My thought as well, so we probably ought to, I don't know if there's ever been one there, so that's my question. Do we need a motion for it or not?
There's a stop sign.
I don't remember one there.
Probably ought to have a motion for stop signs.
If you want to think about it for a week or two, that's fine as well.
What do you want to call this curve, on what street? Between 25th and Bay.
25th and Bay West.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we put a stop sign at the intersection of Bay and the curve between 25th and Bay. This would stop the westbound traffic on Bay Street. The sign would be placed on the northwest corner of the intersection.
Yeah, perfect.
Right here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Next. We were fortunate enough, I need to give Dustin credit, Dustin Hall on this. He searched the internet, searched the internet. We had a dump truck pop up down in Tulsa. It's a, was a 2008 Sterling, had 96,000, 96.6 miles, very good condition, original paint on the cab, what have you. Has a, or had a cat motor 12.5 and a six-speed automatic Allison transmission. Come with all the attachments for the snowplow on the front, so we were able to get them and feel that our snowplow will hook right up to it. They offered us the spreader, and we said we would leave it there with them. It was pretty well rusted out. I don't even know if we could've got it loaded, so anyhow, price on it was 60,000. Actually, it was more than that, and we bargained them down a little bit, and that's kind of where we settled at, so.
Sound like a nice truck.
It's nice, yep.
And that's before death, probably.
It's, yes and no. It's got the, where we gotta burn it out or what have you, but it doesn't have the actual tubes and where we have to add depth and all that.
Sound like a good purchase.
Do you want to be upfront with you? It is yellow. I knew you was not gonna like that.
I take that back.
You already said good purchase, so. But anyhow, I believe it came from South Dakota Department of Transportation. Company bought it in Tulsa. They're downsizing, and we were able to find it and jump on it, so.
So that Bourbon County tag on the side, it'll show real good against that yellow.
It absolutely will stick out, so.
Put that Bourbon County sticker inside the bag.
Good job.
Purchased by Chairman Harris. That's what we'll put on the side of it, so anyhow.
I've had worse on them.
Okay. Also, positive note, 267th and Arrowhead east, or it'd be actually west, excuse me, west of 267th and Arrowhead on, Arrowhead at the railroad tracks. The 36-inch culvert has been dug up and replaced, so we won't have such a narrow crossing there, so.
Thank you, that's great.
Let you know that. Also, just an FYI for everyone, we're tentatively scheduled to burn off Elm Creek Friday, weather permitting and wind permitting, so just getting that out there. It's gonna be a lot of smoke in the area when we do that. Windmills still working with, windmill company on the punch list. Everything's going, going well, following the road use agreement, so just giving you an update on that. And last but not least, I want to thank Susan and everyone involved. We did receive finally budget paperwork last Friday, so that was nice to have accurate budget paperwork for January and February, so anyhow.
Thank you, Susan.
Anything for me?
Two questions.
Yep.
The first one, have you received a notification on what your federal funding is for 2022?
We have, and it's actually been postponed or what have you. There was, and I have to read the exact terminology, but I haven't got exact numbers yet.
Okay. And next week, we're going to Maple, but the week after, you want to talk about our road program again?
Absolutely. Right, I knew everything going on, and I didn't want to bring it up.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, so.
We got time.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
We'll plant on that in two weeks from today. Of course, I want all the money in District 2, of course, I know that's not gonna happen, so. Anything else, Eric?
Anything for me?
Another gentleman on Wagon Road called me again about getting that ditch cleaned out.
Yep. He, again, it's on the, on the list with 170-some others that we've identified so far, and we got several more to go, but we are working down the list.
Oh, I, I, I unfortunately was on the list.
Right, so I just, we only got so, so many pieces of equipment and so much manpower, so we were trying to get there as fast as we can.
Well, you know, what statement was made that doing 50 miles of ditching a year, you take 50 miles of ditches with 1,200 and some odd miles of route, it's gonna take you a while to get through them.
And we're also, that is a true statement, but we're also gonna have to take into consideration, we've got to do something with these crossroad tubes. We can ditch all we want to ditch, but if we don't have somewhere for the water to go, we're kind of gonna have to do it in unison.
Yeah. Well, you mentioned last fall when Dustin was here, you guys had this wonderful plan he's gonna present in the spring on ditching, so.
Right, we're still, we're trying to get there. We've had a little bit of setback or what have you on personnel, so.
And you're right on the cross culverts, you're right, so.
Yeah, and all the water sits in the ditch.
Right.
When it gets to the crossroads.
It's not gonna do anything, or do any good for our road. It's gonna sit there, and then it's gonna work its way underneath, and then we start having subbase issues, and we've got to really concentrate on getting our crossroad tubes. We worked very hard last year on getting our entrance tubes caught up and what have you. We still have handful or more of them to go, but we got to get going on the crossroad tubes, and we'll get there, so.
Well, you didn't get that way overnight.
Nope.
I'm looking forward to hearing your ditching plan.
Okay, all right.
I'm sure it's gonna be good.
It, it's gonna be something.
Something, okay.
All right. Anything else?
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it, everything you do.
Yep.
Ms. Millie Lipskin. Elk Lodges, consideration donation for fireworks.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm coming to you today because for a number of years, I can even say decades, Elks has been responsible for collecting the funding for our community fireworks, which is July 3rd, and we have had a significant increase, like 90% increase in the cost of the fireworks, and we've had one of our major fundraising venues increase their expense to us on what it's going to cost. So I'm asking if county would consider a $750 donation to help us with our fundraising for the fireworks this year.
So normally we do 500?
I believe it's been 250.
250, I couldn't remember.
No, no, the last three years it has been 500, certainly, it has been.
And I have told the other communities that if they're interested in coming to us to ask for donations, please do so.
Not here.
I know. So it's an increase of 250 bucks.
Correct.
Susan, do you know how much money we got in our Parks and Recreation Fund? Too lazy to look it up. Let the finance director do that.
Ending balance, ending balance was zero.
We need to, we need to get that one back to where, because normally you have a thousand, $1,000 in it.
Yeah, well, you can make a transfer from the general or, honestly, with the, with the addition of the alcohol that you've allowed in the county, once you start receiving money off that, a third of that will come into this fund.
I hate to, hate to approve a finance, we don't have the money in the account.
It'd be a general fund, because it would have to be funded.
Yeah, I would be a favor using the general fund. Sipson?
I'll make a motion to donate $750 to the Elks for the town, townwide fireworks display. Usually on, is it on Saturday or, can't remember now.
It's July 3rd.
July, okay, July 3rd.
It's yours Sunday.
I got a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. Thank you for doing it, so. Hamlin Energy Contract. Ms. County Clerk, tell us what that is, or Susan's. Go ahead, Susan.
Go ahead, go ahead. This was the information we talked about last week.
Yes, so Kansas Gas is the utility company. We use their meter, their pipes, but the fuel actually comes from Pro Solutions. They are going out of business. Hamlin Energy, he is the representative that was with Pro Solutions. He's what with this new company. They have offered to, what they do is review your bill, check prices with other companies. They will recommend whether you lock in, switch companies, they watch your bill monthly. This is a contract for them to be able to see our last 12 months of data with Pro Solutions, so they can try and find us the best price. If we do go with this, this contract is until we revoke it in writing, so this is not a set timeframe. If we want to do three months, if you want to do two years, it's just until you notify them in writing that you don't want to use them anymore.
Do we know what's our savings going to a broker like this?
We don't know until they go out and, and do the work for us. They charge up to 20 cents.
Per gallon?
Yeah.
Okay. So is there possibility of us saving money, or do you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We did, we did on our last contract.
You did on the last one?
We did, yeah, did very well, so.
Justin, you got a comment on this?
We actually, we received a letter from Kansas Gas yesterday from our representative there, saying that if we didn't find another supplier, it would transfer over to them, and letting us know that if we use another supplier, we will save money. He sent us some other companies and said you're gonna save probably at least a dollar a gallon, or someone other than them.
We can save money, it's not like a no-brainer, so.
Yeah, we saved a significant amount.
This, this.
The only place that got us.
Just because they weren't for us.
The only place that got us was that real cold, cold snap.
Yeah, everything went away then, didn't it?
So I'll make a motion to have Chairman Harris sign this letter of exclusive representation for Hamlin Energy that we can also revoke at any time by writing a letter to him, actually.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm gonna amend the agenda right quick. Need to amend the agenda and add lawn mowing out at the hospital building.
Okay.
And Commissioner Alston asked to amend the agenda to have my time moved to the very end of the meeting, because I've got three executive sessions, and they're probably five to seven minutes each, so I can go at the end, so we don't have to have people.
Okay, I'll make a, so my first motion is that we amend the agenda to add mowing consideration at the, I don't know the address, the hospital building. 401?
401 Woodland Hills.
401 Woodland Hills.
All in favor? Aye?
Okay, I'll make a motion to move County Councilor Meeks's time on the agenda to the end.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, I guess I thought, is Eric still here? So on the, on the hospital, on the bids for the building to mow and whatnot, there's been a question, and it's a good question actually, whether those bids through DND and Phillips Lawn Care, I believe.
Yeah.
Were apples to apples. So, and, and they're actually not, so. You know, I don't know how we want to do it, but apparently this, the company that's been doing it, is it, I think, G and G mowing, they'll go inside and do the courtyards. I don't think Phillips had that option or knew about that, because I didn't know about it. And so I don't know, I mean, we need to do something pretty quick on this, obviously. Do we need to, you know, there's only two people that submitted a bid. Do we need to reach out to Phillips and say, hey, would you, you know, end G and G both and say, here's the deal, we didn't realize this isn't, this isn't apples to apples. I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's fair to pick either one. I mean, at this point, at this point, we have to pick the one that's gonna do all of it, but they're the only ones that knew how to bid that correctly.
Yeah.
Justin, got an opinion?
Yeah. I would like to rebid it or give. She just said it.
We didn't, we didn't do a good job putting our bids out.
Yeah, that's right. We need to probably rebid it quickly, or I would like to see the local person get an opportunity to understand the bid.
You reject both bids?
Yeah.
And rebid it?
Okay.
Very good.
Okay, I make a motion to reject both bids that we received on the mowing.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And the new bids, Eric, will you work with someone, getting all the specs out to these folks on what they need to mow out there?
Absolutely.
Originally, originally.
I don't know.
Was it out there or here? They called and it was kind of a quick deal, I put something in the paper, they were relating the specs. Okay, so we'll put together the specs.
So you need to, yeah, call G and G.
Yep.
And put specs in and put it out there, and we'll bid it, and they just need to be in by Tuesday next week.
That includes everything, shrubberies, flowers.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think. It wasn't bid, right?
You want to turn to you lawn care then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I guess the reason I asked you to come in here, if we need to, do we have, do you have a guy to go out there and at least mow right quick? Do we have somebody that can do that?
We'll make it happen.
If we needed to?
If we need to do it, we'll make it happen.
Yeah, gotta big mower out, probably.
Right, it's, I'm not sure.
That was gonna be my question.
52-inch or something like that, I'm not sure what it is for sure. 48, somewhere in there, but we'll make it happen if we need to.
Okay.
Yep. Do they have mowers out at?
I don't think so.
Existing, okay, all right.
Eric, I might suggest also you give it some thought for a day. If it's something you'd want to take on with a new mower, then you'd have a new, another person for the winter time.
Right, okay.
And but, you know, if we get close to money, we won't, full-time employee, but we'd get 50% there. That person should take care of that in the summer, then help you in the winter time.
Okay.
But it's something to think about.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Anything else for me?
No.
No, thank you, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Susan Bancroft.
You gonna go in the executive session?
No.
What's that?
She wants to go into executive session.
You don't have Noble Health, Justin, is Josh here?
He is.
Josh, well. And myself.
How many minutes?
It's about 30.
30 minutes?
I need to get my question in.
Okay, I make a motion to go into executive session under KSA 75 dash 4319 B4 to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships, to do just that, to keep their information private. Will be, the people involved will be the three commissioners. No, somebody say no?
Yeah, go ahead.
Noble Health, I mean Drew Solomon, Tom Boozer, and Merrill Atwater. Josh Jones, Rob Harrington, Shane Walker, Susan Bancroft, Justin Meeks will be for 30 minutes, so we will return here at 9:57. We're going to the EOC room, then we'll return here.
Every second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Make a motion and resume normal session at 9:57, no action.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, I'm gonna finish my section and then we'll move on, is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
I'm going to ask that we not do the executive session that I have, it can wait till next week for personnel matters.
Make a motion to move executive session that Susan had for KSA 7543-19B1 to next week.
My next thing is, is just a reminder next week, sorry.
All in favor? Aye.
Didn't let you vote, sorry. Reminder, April 5th, our next meeting is at the Mapleton Community Center at 6:00 PM. And then, I need some guidance on where our next meetings will be, I have those two set, so, just kinda need an idea. We had him tentatively on our calendar, but I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with where our meetings are gonna be.
I'd like to.
Think you might want to concentrate on our incorporated cities first.
But why we're going to Mapleton then?
Well, why go Devon, you're gonna go to, Mapleton is an incorporated city.
Unincorporated or incorporated?
Incorporated.
That Mapleton is? Excuse me then, I want to go to Garland and Hyville.
Garland?
Well Devon, how about Devon?
That's up to you, that's up to you. And we can have one in Garland, see what turnout, then maybe the Hyville people would come. But I want to include those folks, just 'cause they're unincorporated, I still want to give them an opportunity to come see the commissioners.
So do we want to, after Mapleton, we want to try Garland and see what our turnout is, and then we'll decide where we're gonna go next, after that, just kinda?
Of course. I'd like to do that, yes.
Okay, all right, I'll try that. Then my next thing is, is I wanted to hand out, this is what I have done in other places for capital improvements, to basically help the department heads understand what needs to be taken into consideration when we're looking at capital projects. And this is also includes personnel, so if somebody, a department needed to add personnel, they basically have to justify the reason of why they're requesting this. And this is part of the budget process, so let me hand these out to you.
Thank you.
And so there's three different forms, and I'd like to try and incorporate this into one form, but basically a form for them to request personnel, equipment, or if there's a capital improvement project that needs to be done. And it helps them justify cost well ahead of time for our budget purposes. And then on that very back sheet, you'll see, once all of these requests are turned in, I put it on a spreadsheet, and then I show you where all the funding is coming from. So basically you have a holistic view of what's been requested for the year. We ask that they prioritize, so that we understand what's their first priority, second priority, in case that they cannot, we don't have enough funding. So, this is what I've used in the past, I'd like to try and use it here, but it really makes them justify why they're replacing a piece of equipment. You know, it shows how much, how much maintenance has been put into it, if there's a lot of miles on it, number of hours, and it, it just helps you make a better decision as a commission, knowing all, having all that information right in front of you. Any questions on that? I know it's, it's, give you some time to look it over, but I'd like to go over that with our department heads, and again, I will try and get this all on one form, so that they can just make the request on one and not make it a little less time-consuming.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I have.
Okay, moving right along with the agenda, Noble Health. Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Have a, sit down please.
Thank you.
Cliff, I'll be right back.
Okay.
Is that, mic on, red light should be on.
Hello?
Yep.
I guess we can wait on Clifton?
Yeah, yeah, one minute probably. I'd like to welcome Noble Health to our meeting this morning.
Thank you, we're happy to be here.
Good to see you gentlemen.
Yep. Feel like I've seen, seen you a lot the last eight months.
We've, we've had several meetings, good meetings. I, I haven't, I've seen this gentleman here at lunch, but I've never gotten to buy lunch yet. He shows up when we're done eating. Yeah, you're a smart operator, I appreciate that, so. All right, sir, you have the floor.
All right, well hey, good morning commissioners, Drew Solomon, Noble Health. Wanted to come in today, obviously we have had three or four meetings over the last two or three months, I cannot recall exactly how many we have had, but wanted to come in today, give you an update on where we are with regard to the feasibility study. It is substantially complete, there are a few items that still need to be done, the first of which, we need to get the final contractor estimates from the meetings with the five contractors that happened early last week, anticipate that'll take another week or two. We also need to do a substantial mechanical and electrical inspection, that should be scheduled next week or the following week. And then we just need to do the final packaging of all of the feasibility study items. So, substantially complete, a lot of really good findings, you guys have been privy to some of this as we went along, but what I'd like to do right now is introduce Tom Boozer, who could come in as well, and provide some summary points, and also some of the strategic points that would make developing a community hospital in Bourbon County a feasible endeavor. So, I'll turn it over to Tom.
Morning.
Morning.
Grab my notes. So, I here, am here, I represent months of work by our team at Noble Health. My role has just been to kind of be the coordinator of all this research, and to do some of the market and deep dive desk research, which gets us to some of the findings that we're going to share with you today. What we did in the past meetings with, with the council and the commissioners, was just to walk through a methodology that is used to evaluate rural hospitals nationwide, and that methodology gives us the basis, and some rational basis to analyze any situation in any rural community. So with that, then this next effort has been a much deeper dive into the details of that, to understand the context of what's happening in this state, in this region, and in this county. Okay, so what I want to walk you through today has a context in terms of the state context, a regional context, and a county context. Okay? Can you all see this okay? All right. Maybe I'll scooch this just a tad that way, hopefully I'll better. Okay? So, for one, all of rural Kansas, but certainly this part of the state, has a demographic trend happening. One year of out-migration. So every year, 25 families leave this town, leave this county. Okay? The second thing I want to point out, and I will go through this in such, what you're seeing here, the bluer, the ones I want to point out to you, we have a pretty extensive set of findings, and so we don't have the time to go through the details of every one, so we hit the high points, okay? The second part I want to make to you is, is that this, right now, 19%, about 20% of the population is 65 plus in Bourbon County. In 20 years, the population, 40% of the population will be 65 plus. And of course, that, that goes over time. 40%, almost half of your population will be 65 plus in 20 years. Yeah, okay. The other part is, is that, through the whole state of Kansas, southeast Kansas, this region is the least healthy region in the entire state. Further is Kansas as a state, used to be ranked ninth in terms of the health rankings, and has declined over the last generation to 29th out of the 50 states. So there's a, there's a trend happening here of less health, lower health. Okay? Next is, is that when we talk to the communities, not just here, but even in the region, accessing primary care, despite the presence of the community, FQHC here, that CHC, is still a top priority, the feeling, we don't have enough, we need more. We hear that again and again through the community meetings and through the surveys that have been done in the past years. Accessing care, if you have difficulty accessing care, what does that mean? You put off care for chronic conditions or other conditions. And that, in the case of cardiac, creates more acute events and a higher death rate. And the data show us, it's a very significant trend here in this county. Migration out of Bourbon County into other hospitals, of course with the hospital closed, there's migration, people have to go somewhere. Before it closed, it was very substantial migration. $11 million each year leaves Bourbon County for care outside this county. But there's a way to solve that, or at least mitigate that, and that is, is working with employers to go directly, provide value for service, control costs, and provide high-quality health care at a much lower price, low, lower cost. On the migration side, so going forward, if you're gonna, if this is gonna be a sustainable, viable hospital, it must control the out-migration. It must find a way to build the trust in the community and attract people back. Okay? So, there must be that, if there's not, then the, providing that the capability is very expensive, and if it's not used, then it doesn't pay for itself. This is statewide and applies here, and that is, survey after survey saying, oh, we need this, this capability, we need be able to have this service or that service in terms of medical. Well guess what? Hospitals provide it, and then it's not used. People vote and just say, no, no, we trust this other place more, so we leave our current, where we live, and the capability in our town, for some other place that we think is better. So residents say what they want, but they don't actually do it. Next point, in this community, in this region, all the hospitals, if you solve the uncompensated care, these hospitals carry twice the uncompensated care burden as most rural hospitals. If you solve that, you solve the deficit at pretty much every hospital in this region. Uncompensated care is a really big expense for these hospitals. But understand, these hospitals bear, you serve a community, you have people, someone who comes in, who is sick, you treat them. But this is the aftermath of it, when the people can't pay, again and again. So as this population, as this group ages, okay, you can see here, from a financial standpoint, your coverage may exceed, in terms of your income, uh, from a hospital, 40% of revenue. Medicare pays less than private insurers. Medicare typically pays less than the cost to deliver the care. Okay? Current model of this hospital, the cost to deliver the care is higher than what the reimbursement is, and every time you see a patient, you lose money. And the only way hospitals in more urban areas fix that is by a high percentage of private insured patients that come through the hospital and pay, and that's how it gets fixed in that. If you don't have that, if so much of your hospital is Medicare-paid, then you have a basis where the, you start, where you're, you're actually not making enough in terms of revenue to cover your costs for 40% of your activity. Let me make one other point here. However, okay, going back to, to the uncompensated care, if you have a large Medicare, Medicaid population, and you can control the costs and get costs equivalent to, to the payments, you potentially have a very sustainable model, especially with the population aging. So that the destination here is, is to align those two. Easy to say, hard to do, but it is feasible. Right now, 30% of, of Kansas community hospitals have a negative Medicare margin, we're back to the point I made, okay? And in some places, it's twice that. So this is structural. This isn't just about Bourbon County. This is nationwide, this is Kansas-wide, this is southeast Kansas region-wide. And this is why so many of the hospitals get some level of tax subsidy, is because there is this structural mismatch between costs and revenue. And the only way to really surmount this going forward is to do something different than what you're doing right now, what has been done in the past. You have a structural problem, you have to change the approach. And part of that is collaboration. Long talked about, it's a decade-old proposal, saying, you know, rural hospitals in the state of Kansas should collaborate more. And if they did, they could find synergies, they could find ways to save money, maybe we don't do this one procedure, maybe you do it. Maybe we send our patients to you for these things. None of that, to what I can see, and what we can see in our analysis, really has truly happened in any systemic way. Maybe they're a one-off, but for the most part, no. So in most of the community studies in southeast Kansas, there's talk about coordination and community and, and working together. It becomes, from what I can see outwardly, and what we can see outwardly, a, a nice goal that is never met. You never actually do it, just talk through. This is what can require transformation, a completely different way of, of behaving with regard to healthcare. And there has to be some sort of community leadership to get people to understand that using healthcare in the region keeps it sustainable. And designing healthcare in such a way where you have quality in every area may mean that not everybody does the same thing, that maybe that's shared between hospitals in some way. In this region, workforce could be the main component to whether hospitals are viable or not. Struggling to find highly qualified people to deliver the quality care turns out to be a really difficult thing to do. And further, it's getting more expensive to do it. It's much more expensive to recruit and retain employees in healthcare now than it was two years ago. So these new approaches, there is a, a nursing school in Pittsburgh, graduates 120 nurses per year, and every student that leaves there, on average, owes about $25,000. Now, if you come from families here, and, and yours come from a family of not much means, $25,000 debt is a lot of money. It turns out that that's going to be about maybe 15, 20% of your pay you're paying out every month to pay off that loan. What if there were help for these candidate nurses, so they wouldn't have that debt? And there's a number of other ways, new approaches that could happen, and this requires community activism and some original thoughts, some new thought about how to solve the problem. So this hospital operates, the former hospital here operated in a certain model that allowed medical surgery and other things like that. There are emerging, there's an emerging model called a rural emergency hospital, which is an option for this, this hospital. It could perhaps do that. It's emerging legislation, it is not done, there's no assurance that, that this hospital would qualify for it, but it at least is an option to look at. It provides some level of sustainability for rural hospitals, and, and it may provide an option for this community. Okay? What I would say is, is two of the most active, the Kansas Hospital Association has done a superb job over the last decade of framing the problem and advocating on behalf of Kansas rural hospitals. And the C, HQPR is another national organization that advocates that. And these two together have these recommendations that somewhat align with the REH legislation, so there is some potential where there's a, a, a new option for this community that did not exist before. But what we don't know right now is exactly how that will play out. It is set to go into law and into effect the 1st of January 2023, so we will know soon how this plays out as this hospital comes. So on the building itself, our analysis so far, we're not done with it, but we believe so far that the cost can be supported by the operations that, that we've looked at for the hospital, that, that we have a sustainable building that can support itself, and, and that that building can, can indeed operate on a cost basis that, that we can support the operations. Okay? And further, it can be a platform for other services for the community. You've got a very large hospital, maybe not all of it is used for healthcare, maybe some of it is used for other purposes that are useful to the community, childcare.
Childcare among them, yeah.
Let me now transition over to our recommendations. So that was, that was the summary of the findings of the research. And out of that, that the recommendations represent a synthesis of the research, what we think at this point, based on all of the effort that we've made, community conversations, market research, demographic research, healthcare research, all these things, what do we think is viable here? First off, we think that moving the hospital into a nonprofit 501(c) status, given the appraisal of the hospital and what the hospital as a structure is, is the appropriate way to go forward. A managed service organization to manage the, the activity is, is necessary in, in some structure, and we'll need a tax-exempt bond to support the, the building. Now, the PPS model is what the hospital used before, so reopen it with a current operating model that allows you to do a wide variety of services, and continue on with, with the structure that it once had, maintain the current tendency, so keep continuity. The people who are serving the community now, keep that going. Assist them with any existing tenants that intend to move out. Our job is, is to make sure it's, to serve the community, is to do that well. However this plays out, that is a goal here. Collaborate where we can, going back to what our findings were, absolutely important to, to collaborate in some way, so that we can provide health services. It can't be dumbed down by one organization. You have to reduce outmigration on services, absolutely critical, as I pointed out before. We think that, that given the space in the hospital, that there is the potential to build a behavioral health unit, and this behavioral health unit would house patients outside of, of Bourbon County, and provide revenue for the hospital, and provide a service for the state of Kansas that has a need for this. So there's a high need for this, and as the, the structure and, and the, the size of the, of the facility enable this, we think that's possible and should happen. And further is down, in, in the basement of the hospital, the idea to be able to serve families with a daycare and Head Start program, there's space to do it. That enables people who consider having careers and working in the hospital, now they have a way to take care of their kids and secure the, the care for their kids while they work, and it's convenient and close, and the rest of the community can use it, seems like a good idea, and the space allows it, so that, we think that should happen. Along with that, the social activities and other things, for all age groups, seniors, families, you've got a large campus there, there's some room to, to be able to do things. But the, the disconnect between people using services outside of the, the, the region and staying put is based on the trust that people actually have in the hospital. So one of the most important things to do is, is to build the trust. You have to rebuild the trust of the community to use the hospital, and to want to use it, and to believe that they get the best care there. And as I said, mentioned before, this $11 million that leaves the county, if just 30 to 40% of that money were to remain, and those services were, and that revenue would remain in the community, that's the difference between a viable and a not-viable hospital. And next is, is what I mentioned before, this large burden of uncompensated care has to start beginning, you need to mitigate that, and there are ways to do that. There's counseling, there's inter, interaction. You do not want to face the problem when someone comes in and gets a residency care and they can't pay. There needs to be some, there needs to be, and there are programs to be able to mitigate that. Get people enrolled in Medicaid, or can be enrolled in Medicaid, things such as that. And next is coordinate services with hospitals in the region. It is time to have very frank conversations with other hospitals about how to coordinate and collaborate to deliver great care at the lowest possible cost. That every hospital in the region, every hospital loses money. This hospital here is not unique. So if everybody has the same problem, it's time to fix that, and it means doing something different than what's been happening today. And that means to, to, to take the greater good and, and to put that in front of what might be good for individuals or for particular hospitals. Add the ambulance district to the hospital, combine the two so that the two are operated in synchronicity. And lastly is, is to work with the business community to contract directly with them to provide healthcare in this town for the people who work here. And if we can do that, if that can happen, then you have a sustainable basis for a hospital going forward. You have the ability to support and to operate day-to-day without losing money. So if you think about what I've said in terms of the, the key points about a sustainable hospital, you have outmigration, you have uncompensated care, you've got a service, services that you provide the community that they need, but don't necessarily use, so you build it, they don't come. So those three key things there are the problems to solve, but they're the root of the problem of this hospital not having enough revenue to survive. And if we, if that is addressed in a systematic way, then, then you have a sustainable hospital. And what I would argue with the research that we've done is, is that it does not fall in just hospital management. It, it really is a community project, in each and every community to do this. Change attitudes, align interests, and get people to understand and see what using the, the services at the hospital really do mean for the community. Okay? Everyone thinks about your hospital, if, I think most people hear the attitude like, if we don't have a hospital here, we can't attract new business, people don't want to move here? Well, then that means a, a utilization and a belief in the hospital, and it's, it's both sides. The hospital has to create and deliver services that people trust. We all have families, and, and I, my daughter is sick, I want her to take her the best possible care, someone I trust, first and foremost. So that's important, that's a necessary element. But it has to meet a community that is willing to listen and see and, and believe, you know? That's, I think, the crux of this, that if we can solve that, solve the key points of this, you have a path forward for a feasible hospital, sustainable hospital, year in, year out, and not the, the highs and lows that you've experienced in the past. So thank you for your attention.
I might emphasize point 17 there, that, that Tom had, with regard to the relationship a community hospital has with the business community. It is so imperative that your commercially insured employers, your largest employers, the folks that are really the backbone of this community, participate in providing and finding local care opportunities. And I think, you know, being business-friendly in healthcare and in hospital work is so incredibly important, so the notion of, you know, business contracting, using transparent pricing, and, you know, reference-based pricing in order for them to maximize services is a critical, critical component of, of doing these things. And so Mr. Boozer's brief presentation here obviously is a, a 5% of what is hundreds of pages of data that we have compiled over the last eight months, and obviously are continuing to compile, as we mentioned at the outset. There have been a few things that have come up as a result of this feasibility study that we thought were very striking and very interesting. So one of the reasons why you do feasibility studies is so that you can understand what you think you know, but then you can also understand what you don't know. One of those things that we've come to learn through the data discovery and the process was actually using one of the best national appraisal companies in this, we came to learn and understand with the finished appraisal, the market rate value of the building as it currently is structured and stands. Obviously, that'll be part of the feasibility study, will be part of the final document. I believe you all know this, we've shared that earlier, I happen to have this here in front of me. The market rate going concern value of the building that the appraisal company came back with was actually $19.6 million. So I don't know what the historical discussion has been about the building, but based on appraisal, it is a significant asset. It also has a, you know, just incredible findings with, with regard to that, but would be happy to pass this around, I think you all have seen that, but no need, I think you've seen and understood that. You know, that appraisal has provided us significant guidance in the, sort of the remaining parts of this feasibility study. It has showcased to us that there are incredible opportunities, as Tom mentioned, for collaboration, for community participation. As you all know, as commissioners, I proactively reached out to Clifton about the findings of this appraisal, and sort of what that meant or could mean for the cooperative agreement, and where we see the feasibility study ending up. We believe very strongly that creating a tax-exempt entity, a 501(c)(3) entity, to potentially house a building and, and all the other assets would be appropriate. As with a true 501(c)(3), they can't be controlled by a for-profit entity. So, you know, with that, wanted to make sure that, that we spoke and talked clearly about, about our, our thought process, and that our responsibility was to you all as a client, and it was our job to make sure we provided you the best, best and most viable path forward. And so that's, that's what we feel like we're, have done and are in the process of doing, but that... But that being said, based on our cooperative agreement and the things that we've got, I think it would be most appropriate for any benefits of building transference or any additional funding that would have been in a cooperative building. I think that should be, should be looked at and pledged to a future 501(c)(3) entity or community-driven entity that would help further this path and take the next step with regard to community hospitals. As Tom mentioned, this will take collaboration, it will take community partnership with corporations, and these things will be paramount in order to do that. And so that is, that's a big piece. Like I said, we've got some more work to do, but this appraisal obviously brings to light the fact that there is a significant asset there. It could present the borrowing basis or the bonding basis for a really great viable community project to move forward. You know, like I said, our responsibility is to you all as client, and with that, you know, it's our job to inform you of those findings and make sure that we're all clear as we progress and move to the finish. So that was, that was a big piece, and I open it up to the commissioners.
Go ahead, Clive.
No, I hate to put you on the spot, but when, I mean, I think people are going to know, when do we get the actual document?
Yep, we anticipate.
It's a guess, I know it's a guess.
No, it's a guess, yeah, no, it's a guess. So we're, as you all can see, we are substantially complete. I would anticipate that, you know, within four to six weeks, we should have this completely finished. That is contingent on getting final construction numbers and also finishing those final inspections. We want to make sure that we, you know, we finalize everything, do a final review and make sure that everything is as we suspect it. We thought it was appropriate, given the previous updates that we'd made to the commission, that we continue on that cadence and provide another update.
I'd like to add that possibly, correct me as we go here, with the possibility of going to 501(c) and with the feasibility study, we can move forward with the foundation of a healthcare facility in Bourbon County through Noble or cooperative other entities. So I think we have the building blocks that we need to move forward from our conversations. And it seemed real positive to me as a chairman and an old person living in Bourbon County, that it's a positive that, you know, we're still on track for a healthcare facility. We had to have this study and we're getting it, it's almost completed. The appraiser, appraisal was much higher than what we expected, was changes to possibility of 501(c). But there's still some opportunity for us, so.
Oh, you, the data would reflect you have immense opportunity. The outmigration, the existing people, the willingness to collaborate, you have some great healthcare entities that support this community right now. And, you know, those people should not be discounted, they are, they're doing a lot of great work in the community. The reality is, is there's still a need for a community hospital. You know, you, obviously, I was not in this community when you guys went through and experienced your closure, but communities need, they need community hospitals, they need that based on drive time, distance, service. But we have to think about these things differently. And that's why the business and community support approach. If the business community utilizes a hospital for the services, lab, imaging, all the basic things, you can create a sustainable outcome based on that. But it has to be, and in our recommendations, we'll see this, the notion of having a corporate advisory council for a hospital. You have to have business participation, and if the businesses participate and directly engage with the hospital, those commercially insured folks, that's how the hospitals achieve sustainable revenue. The other thing that I would tell you is, a lot of folks, you know, often think about how do you, you know, how do you pay for a hospital or how do you get into it? Obviously, this appraisal and all the other work, there is a significant asset here. I don't know the contemplation of years ago with regard to, you know, what could or should be done, but as it sits here today, it is a significant asset and one that I think could be the basis for borrowing or doing tax-exempt bonding, not necessarily any public bonding, but just a traditional tax-exempt bond. And I think you could do RFPs for MSOs and other things like that for each service, and I think that you can find a sustainable outcome. The biggest challenge in healthcare right now is always systems and workforce. And, you know, the workforce component of this is significant. You have to have collaboration, you have to do that. I think you all did a marvelous job sustaining healthcare here with the collaborations and partnerships that you had. It doesn't mean that there's not a need still for a community hospital, it just means that, you know, we've got to get everybody to work together toward that end and find that basic, find that basic viability of services that work. And I hope, you know, that our feasibility study and also, you know, the work of several of our partners here can showcase, there's a very clear and direct path to do that. It just takes the work. And so that's, yeah, there's a lot to be positive about.
So one of the things on the significant cost or appraisal of this building, people need to understand that with a $19 million appraised value on this, if it went to a private entity, then you're going to be looking at a significant amount of money to the IRS.
Yeah, there could be a significant, there could be a significant tax spend. And the reality is, as you all sought us out, sought us out to look at this study, it was to do what was best for the county. And in looking at this, it seems like the county has a significant asset and there are significant partners within the community and ourselves that, you know, there is a collaboration to be had here and there's an opportunity so that the community can be in control of its destiny. And I think doing feasibility studies, going through this data, helps us understand and give confidence to a community that there are things.
I just want to take this time to thank Drew, Merrill, Tom, Tom, for the work you've done. Thank you so much, we appreciate it. This feasibility study is a large document full of a lot of great information, a lot of information we weren't, we weren't ready for, I guess, specifically the appraisal. We did not know that building would appraise at that. But this is why we do these things and this is why we took the time and the money that we spent to get this feasibility study finished. And this is really helping us pave, like Drew is saying, pave a path to getting this all completed. So on behalf of my board, Reddy, I just want to say, Drew, thank you for Noble Health, for all of you've done, your continued support of this project, and we're looking forward to putting this data and this information to work for what's best for the county and the people within this county, not just one entity, not just one organization, but yet for everyone that lives in Bourbon County. That's why we started this effort and that's why we continue to work this effort. And this information, this data will get us to where we need to go. So thank you very much.
I would say, I would, thank you, Rob. I would, I would tell you, self-interest cannot work in rural healthcare. It just, you have to put the communities first and that's the reality of this. You know, this would be a very attractive deal for any hospital organization, but the reality is, we have to put something together that's sustainable for a community. And I think what you've done with a building, with what you've, you know, looked at committing with regard to structurally, with regard to investment, I think that in a community-based 501(c)(3) can be the best approach moving forward. And obviously, as we spend the next, like I said, four to six weeks wrapping up the final elements of this, with that being in mind, as you all know, want to make sure that we, we continue and endeavor towards that direction.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for the information, we appreciate you doing our studies, so.
No, yeah, we will keep it up, we'll, we will be back, probably once if not twice in the next four to six weeks as we, we work to complete these items.
Yeah, looking forward to seeing completed documents.
Thank you. No, absolutely.
Thanks, we'll see you in a month or so. Talk to you sooner, probably.
Okay, moving along with the agenda, public comment. Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
I don't know.
Big good idea to identify yourself, the people in the camera might not know you.
Oh, I'm Don Kaufman, lifelong resident of Bourbon County.
Thank you. I don't know what your signing policy is at the county, but are we putting in a new stop sign out there at Bronson that hasn't been there before?
Yes, we made that decisions today, that's what the commissioners does, we look at the flow of traffic and that certainly, right in that area, it could be a disconnect of somebody needs to stop coming around that curve or somebody going away. But yes, we make that decision.
Okay, to Eric on the safety side of it, I wonder, do we need to put a stop ahead there to let the drivers know that there is a new stop sign there?
And that's typical, he'll put a stop ahead, and it's going to be real limited on that one because he don't have a lot of section to section, but I'm sure Eric will put a stop ahead sign, yeah.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Anyone else from the public, doctor?
Thank you all.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
That's major. When you talk about healthcare, we move things around all over the place, but when we've lost over a billion dollars by not expanding Medicare, they call it Obamacare, whatever you want to call it. But the bottom line is, they did a survey and 78% of Kansans would like to have that happen. I know we can't do anything about it. In Missouri, they did a ballot initiative and made them do it. And we're the only state around here, Oklahoma does it, Nebraska, Colorado, and Missouri does it. And we'll be one of the last. And when you're, they estimated that if we actually did that now in the year, I think it's, what I seen was the year 2025, that Kansas would actually get an income $25 billion and create over 100,000 new jobs. So that would be feasible, I would think, to do that.
I would think so.
And on another note, and I know this is a commissioner item here, but in Allen County, they have to subsidize their hospital at $2 million a year and they're subsidizing their ambulance service for like a million a year. So that's $3 million out of their budget. And to have a hospital, it costs lots of money.
Yeah.
And.
What did Allen County pass, the sales tax or something to help the hospital?
I think they did.
I think so. Revenue deal, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the nice thing about the 501(c)(3) and the bonding, the business plan would have to support it for payback, not to taxpayers.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, anyone else in the public comments, Ann? Okay, moving right on, elected official comment? Morning, Sheriff.
Morning. I just want to, apparently we're getting ready to go into budget talks and stuff like that. In regards to last week's county commission meeting in Union Town, I just want to bring to your attention Kansas Supreme Court case that affects the sheriff's office, and that's the Board of County Commissioners, the County of Lincoln, Kansas, versus Roy Needlander, Supreme Court. I don't know if either one of you are familiar with that case. I suggest that you get with your county counselor, have him go over that case with you along with the business administrator in regards to employees, hiring, firing, and retaining, and some other concerns. So I just, so, I just wanted, since we're getting ready to go into budgets and there was a comment that was made earlier, I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page in regards to that.
Sheriff brought up a really good point. There was some comments made in a prior commission meeting about the ability of the commission to control elected officials. Some statutes basically say commission's responsible for policy except for elected officials. And so there's actually the Supreme Court case he's talking about, I know that Lynn and I have talked about it years ago, you guys have no control over the hiring or firing of any elected officials. Or maintaining or any of that, I mean, you have no ability to tell.
I didn't think we said we did.
Yeah, well.
We said we did?
No, 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 no. This was a prior commission meeting where some things were said that you would have that control. But that's not the case, I mean, it's, so going back to the handbook, it's pretty interesting, like if there's policy in the handbook and an elected official doesn't want to follow that policy, they would probably, based off the Supreme Court case and also prior rulings, the AG's opinions and things like that, I don't think you could really do that. And that's what Bill's bringing up, is that that case is right on point. You can't fire or hire a deputy. You can't hire or fire someone in Patty's office, you can't. So, you know, taking that down the slippery slope, well, if you can't hire or fire them, then what's the point of the policy? Salary schedule, I think there's some case that would stand up, I mean, things like that, but no, I don't think there's any way you can tell any elected official who their employees are going to be. And they really, you can't control their policy, really. I mean, the sheriff has a completely different policy manual than, you know, Rowan Bridge. I mean, Rowan Bridge isn't an elected official, you have complete control over those, over those positions, but an elected official, and you guys, I think, got some statutes that show that, but it says really clearly in the statute, elected officials, and then Bill's bright lined it with that case.
Well, that's okay, I didn't want to control Bill's department.
No, no, I'm not saying that you did, but like I said, it's budget time that's coming up, there's going to be discussion regards to personnel, also trying to purchase certain pieces of equipment that also falls under certain Kansas statutes that the county commissioners are required for the sheriffs to have to maintain so that they can perform their duties as the sheriff's office. And also, once again, I'll make this public announcement today, is that my door is always open for any discussion whatsoever in regards to personnel, salaries, overtime, what we do or stuff like that, so please come and see me and I'll be more than happy to sit down and discuss it and we will explain it again. Under Sheriff Cole and Major Bobby Reed has done an outstanding job in kind of dissecting the procedures and operations of personnel and hours worked and the nutrition of the employees that we have, how many it takes, how many we think we need, which kind of goes back to what I said earlier in regards to Needlander. So it's something we might need to sit down and discuss and figure out what we need to do. Because we are going to have some grants that are going to be running out here before too long. Okay, any questions?
I don't.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any other elected comments? Commission comments, Lynn?
Sure. So I wasn't really saying not to have meetings at these unincorporated towns, but there's some things that I would like to see going forward. One of them is having a night meeting here.
Yeah.
And another one would be Devon is a populated area with a fire station, I'd like to see one there. And I'd also like to see one at the lake.
Lake Fort Scott.
Lake Fort Scott. And they have a lake advisory board, there's quite a number of people live out there and they very rarely ever come to the commission meeting.
Well, I was hoping, and Ash and I talked about earlier and some of this was her ideal.
How about Hammond?
Yeah, Hammond, Fulton.
Fulton Incorporated, yeah.
Yeah, Fulton and Hammond.
I would like to see us go offsite once every quarter, then have a night meeting here every fifth or sixth meeting or something, I don't know.
So, you know, maybe you go through the initial thing as once a month to get the initial and then go to a quarter.
Then get into quarterly fashion, so, yeah.
What do you think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think as we go to Garland and maybe Hyattville and of course Fulton's a incorporated city.
Does Hammond have a community center?
Yes. We'll see what kind of participation that we get from each area, it might not be worthy of going back the second time, but like Union Town was a great turnout. So we want, that's what we was looking for and we found it, we got it. So I want to move forward, as you've mentioned, even the unincorporated cities, give them participation, county government.
One of the last I can think of is, probably won't go to Sealy, because I don't think they have a community center there. Porterville's nothing there anymore.
Nothing there, so.
You got a lot of those unincorporated spots. You need to understand about the unincorporated towns.
Yeah, and I agree.
The county is responsible for maintaining their roots.
I agree, once a month won't hurt anything until we get the format set up and see what kind of participation we get, continue moving forward. It might be we never go back to Garland, they might not want to see us, or Fulton, or Hyattville, so I'd be in favor of doing everything we can to meet with the people.
Well, I was surprised on the turnout because we tried it before and no one showed up.
Yeah, we had a good turnout, 32 people, what I read, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Anything else, Lynn? Anything else, Lynn? Clifton, anything?
Nope.
I don't have really much. You know, we are moving forward to the budget workshops, worksheets, whatever Susan wants to call them, but I will say publicly, I am not in favor of raising the mill levy at all. I will go forward with trying to drop the mill levy. That's a tough situation, because everyone needs pay raises. But we, as the commissioners, and working with Susan, and department heads, and elected officials, we got to figure out, is there any way we can do both? Because I want to stay revenue neutral, because I think we pay enough taxes now, and I would encourage U234 and the City of Forscott, other taxing entity, to go that route and keep your taxes down, just work with our citizens and make this a good place to live, so that's all I have.
One of the things that I suggested and have more than once is, if you have a surplus in your department, use it for pay raises.
Well, yeah, we've seen that.
That way you're not raising taxes.
Yeah.
You're just using part of the budget that you've already allocated. And I know that there's two or three, well, I know there's at least four, three department heads, maybe four, that always have a pretty good carryover.
Yeah.
And they do that for a purpose, to try to save taxpayer money. And this way, like I said, we're going to do the pay raises and have a revenue-neutral budget.
Yeah, with that carryover, that gives them an opportunity to give some pay raises and keep their budget as is, because of the carryover. So I don't know if people's going to take that opportunity to take advantage of that situation. I hope so. We did a way of a resolution on the salaries last January, which would give...
Susan said something about that she's going to bring it up at one of the department head meetings.
Yeah.
So I thought it was a good idea.
I think it's a great idea, and we want folks to make good money working for us, a decent salary for their families, so that's our goal.
Well, my own personal opinion, in today's environment where you've got inflation running rapid, people can't stand another tax bill increase.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have to stay neutral somehow, so...
Yep.
Okay.
Another kudo to Susan for getting the reports out.
I look for entertainment. Thank you, Lynn.
You're Justin.
Pardon? Oh, Justin's coming back for entertainment.
Hey, Justin, council.
Yeah.
Almost forgot you.
I've got three executive sessions. I'll need three experts to join me in each executive session. The first one I need Shane Walker, who's our IT director, with regards to potential litigation. It'll be three minutes. I probably should go five, because there's probably a lot of questions to talk about. There will be action on that one when we come out.
Which one is it?
Litigation.
Consultation with attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privy. Which one is it, Justin?
This is attorney-client. I'm bringing Shane in as an expert in his field to help us with the situation with potential litigation, and there will be action when you come out.
I guess I make a motion to go into executive session under case A 75-4319b2 for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship for possible litigation, will return here at 9:58, 10:58, sorry, and back in this room. It'd be three commissioners, county councillor Meeks and Shane Walker.
And Shane Walker's being invited because he's an expert in his field.
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No.